I like to call this September 12th Council Work Session in Order and regular council meeting. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence and let's remember all those who passed away during the month.
(Inaudible).
All call please. Mr. Pezza.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
Present.
Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Petroci.
Present.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, we have some presentations. We like to haul them so we don't hold everybody up. So Mike, you're here from the hospital.
Sure.
Lower Bucks Hospital is here for a quick presentation.
President Ralph, Mayor Ralph, congratulations. Thank you, fellow board member, Lou, and council. So I'm Mike Maan, the CEO for Lower Bucks Hospital. Very proud to be at a great institution. Today, you know, normally we've gotten up, introduced our new docs, talked about two talk lines today, and we're going to talk about a really tough one. And actually, I'm not going to do the talking. Our Director of Psychiatry is going to do the talking. So I want to introduce Leanne Morse. She's our Director of Psychiatry. And I got to tell you, she is actually raised here, and she'll have to meet you who her stepmother is.
Hello.
Hi.
You might know me as Mcozy. So, Lower Bucks Hospital is here to serve the community. One out of five people live with a mental health condition. Over 27 million people who suffer from mental health disorders go untreated. Suicidal ideation continues to increase among adults in the U.S. 5% of adults report having serious thoughts of suicide. 10 to 20% of adolescents struggle with mental illness. One in six youths report making a suicide plan. Awareness and education about mental health is the only way we can break the stigma of mental health. I am here today to inform the community what Lower Bucks has to offer those in crisis. Lower Bucks Hospital has two behavioral health units. Our adult unit is for patients 18 and out of high school and older. The adult unit has 27 patient beds. Our senior unit is for patients 65 and older and is an 18-bed unit. Treatment is available for a variety of conditions, including but not limited to depression, psychosis, bipolar disorder, anxiety, and behavioral problems. Patients are cared for by psychiatrists, social workers, registered nurses, behavioral health technicians, and therapists. The program is also designed to educate patients and families on ways to better understand their conditions, develop healthier coping skills, and create a safe, secure follow-up plan for post-discharge care. Because mental health is often unseen. They don't ask to have depression or end up with too much stress, to suffer with life's issues and end up a mess. They don't ask to feel lonely or to live in fear every day, having to care for those you loved and lose the ones you wanted to stay. They don't ask to suffer in silence or always live in doubt. Sometimes it just needs a friendly face to talk and help them out. The mind is very complex, and life can be very mean. Ask for help if you think it's needed because mental health is often unseen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, or Mike, these guys?
Yeah, any questions at all? I know one of the questions that was asked prior was about the youth and how many times they'll experience in their lifetime, I guess.
Well, as I said, one out of six children is actively thinking about suicide. And we see this increase in our crisis center. Now, we don't have a place to place the adolescent. However, they are seen, they are evaluated in our ER, and then we have to find a bed. And so that leads to more time than we want someone to sit there and wait. It's a severe crisis. But we're there. We have psych nurses in our crisis now, and we actively try to get them therapeutic communication, desolation, try to give them as much resources as they can, they and their families, while they're sitting there waiting to be placed in a facility that can accommodate.
Hey, buddy.
And does that include, like, what if a patient doesn't have insurance?
Okay, so insurance, many times we do go through the MA app with them. Of course, it does take part that they have to bring stuff on, but we, as at prime, we help them make through that transition and accept them onto our units.
That's right.
Yes. Also get county funding. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just had a hobby fitting that starts to rage during our conference. It's a really tough topic. It's a sad topic.
No, it is. No, thank you. Thank you.
Are you here for the subdivision, for Lumbermans?
Yes.
So our solicitor got tied up in traffic, so he's not going to be here, but you guys could still go to the podium and make a brief presentation if you want.
Okay.
Do you want to put the board up here?
Yes. My name is Ted Coe, and I'm with Springtack Consulting. I'm the engineer for Lumberman Associates. We're here tonight to request a waiver from land development from the Borough Council. The project that we propose to do on the site is, the property is located at 2000 Road. It's on parcel number 4-15-2-3, and it's located within the light industrial district. It's a five-acre parcel, and we propose as part of this to put up an 18-by-46 size morden building, as well as some filter equipment and also a concrete pad. The purpose of the building is going to be so that we can have trucks back into the morden building and dispose of the sawdust from the operations at Lumberman. There's not going to really be too much in terms of traffic to the site. We expect maybe two or three trucks to come in each day for it. And the area that we're disturbing on the side is actually quite small. It's about a third of an acre with about less than a foot of fill for the building. And the area where the building's going to be put in is over-existent, impervious coverage, which is a combination of compacted earth and asphalt. So there's not going to be a need for any stormwater management measures. And basically, the reasons for our request for the waiver from land development is that the accessory building that we're proposing on the site is subordinate to the principal building, which is a, on the site, which is a 40,000 square foot warehouse. And the other reason is we also have the support from the borough engineer as well. And we're not going to be making the parking worse. The parking actually works out on our site. And that's pretty much it for my presentation tonight. Short but sweet.
Any questions?
I'm representative, Lorraine and I represent the ward in which this project is occurring. So we're on the other side of the railroad tracks. How, if at all, would this impact your shipping operation as it currently is?
It's not going to impact it.
No, there's going to be a couple extra trucks going in there a day for to take the sawdust out of it.
So I'm actually referencing the trains. Will there be any impact on the train?
No.
And the reason that I ask is that, and it's not completely related, but I think it could possibly be related, is that a concern that a lot of the residents have on the other side, and I'm really not trying to ambush you here. It just happens, it just happens to be the fact that we had a conversation with Conrail, and frankly, they sort of blamed you. And that is that the operations are currently and consistently overnight and are extremely loud, and they basically told us that there were no, there wasn't much they could do because of your schedule. Are you guys in the know?
They have.
Can you turn the mic?
No, sorry. They have access. We get a shift, we're supposed to get a shift every day. They have access to the key to the gate. So they, we all.
They pick up and deliver, you don't care?
It's, no, it's totally their discretion.
Okay.
And we don't work, we only work an eight or nine-hour shift.
Right, sure.
So we're not, if they want it to come in every day during the day, that's fine.
Yep, I appreciate you.
They have the key to our facility, so they can come in whenever they would like.
Got it. And that's why I was asking how it could impact, because I, it didn't feel to me like we were getting the straight answer. But I wanted to clarify that that is not your decision as to when those operations on the rail lines are happening.
We're just happy to get a delivery daily, which doesn't always happen, but we're happy to get a delivery every day.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Mr. Whitaker here that's going to discuss our upcoming DOOP this Saturday night. Craig, I think there's something here that Matt's going to come out when you're ready. He's going to come out to play for council.
Yeah, I spoke about Matt earlier. Unless something's changed.
Okay, you got it taken care of.
People at home can see it. Unless, unless it doesn't work.
Do you want the light?
We'll go through a couple things. Thank you, Ralph. Saturday night is our annual concert down in the parking lot. This year, we're calling it Oldies on the River. Couple things, the show's going to start 6 o'clock sharp. They promised, the promoter says, everybody be ready to go at 6 o'clock. There'll be feel-like dancing, there'll be some pre-dancing starting around 5 o'clock. We have moved up the courtesy buses, starting now at 3 o'clock. Starting at 3 o'clock. The reason being, we've added a lot more food vendors, so we'd like to invite you to come down early, get something to eat before the show, take advantage of the new food vendors. The courtesy buses will start 3 o'clock at the Lenox Building, and they're going to continually run until 11 o'clock that night. It's going to be a great night. You know, we have the Chicklets returning, great girls who warm things up and back up the other acts. The Tokins are returning, who did The Lion Sleeps Tonight. And we're really lucky with probably the most popular act we have ever had at any of the concerts. He's back for the third time. Bobby Wilson will be returning. If you like Bobby Wilson, there's a new group, and they'll be coming on last, but they're called Shadows of the Sixties. This is to salute the Motown. They salute The Temptations, The Four Tops, The Supremes, Stevie Wonder. There's about 15 or 16 performers with full costume changes. As Merle says, he has to do a dressing tent behind the stage. You'll see the video. If you like Motown music, this is going to be a great night. So bring all your friends, make sure you bring some lawn chairs. They have a nice place to sit. And we're going to try to show you the video to see some of the acts where, the video that we've been running on Facebook.
Get ready for Oldies on the River. The Bristol Borough Council presents Oldies on the River, Saturday, September 17. The show starts at 6 o'clock with pre-show dancing at 5. Join all your friends for a great night of music and fun featuring Vinnie Mendango, The Chicklets, Jay Siegel's Tokins, the incredible Bobby Wilson. And appearing for the first time. more. Courtesy shuttle buses and parking will be available at the Lenox Parking Lot located at 1414 Ratcliffe Street, directly across from Caesar's Restaurant. The courtesy buses will start at 3 and run continuously until 11:00 P.M. Come on down early and enjoy all our tasty food trucks. So grab your lawn chair, join all your friends. Saturday, September 17, starting at 6 o'clock for Oldies on the River in historic Bristol Borough. The concert will be held in the Mill Street Parking Lot along the Delaware River. The rain date is Sunday, September 18, starting at 4. Please help us spread the word, share and like this post.
Thank you for caring for everything you do for our town.
My pleasure. Thank you. Let's just make sure Matt's.
Okay, that's good enough then. That's fine.
Thunder, I mean, it was raining.
Because they were cleaning it up there.
Get ready for Oldies on the River. The Bristol Borough Council presents Oldies on the River, Saturday, September 17. The show starts at 6 o'clock with pre-show dancing at 5. Join all your friends for a great night of music and fun featuring Vinnie Mendango, There will be great food trucks with specialty sandwiches, pizza, funnel cakes, and much more. Courtesy shuttle buses and parking will be available at the Lenox Parking Lot located at 1414 Ratcliffe Street, directly across from Caesar's Restaurant. The courtesy buses will start at 3 and run continuously until 11:00 P.M. Come on down early and enjoy all our tasty food trucks. So grab your lawn chair, join all your friends. Saturday, September 17, starting at 6 o'clock for Oldies on the River in historic Bristol Borough. The concert will be held in the Mill Street Parking Lot along the Delaware River. The rain date is Sunday, September 18, starting at 4. Please help us spread the word, share and like this post.
Thank you for caring for everything you do for our town.
My pleasure. Thank you. Let's just make sure Matt's.
That's fine.
Thunder, I mean, it was raining.
Because they were cleaning it up there.
Get ready for Oldies on the River. The Bristol Borough Council presents Oldies on the River, Saturday, September 17. The show starts at 6 o'clock with pre-show dancing at 5. Join all your friends for a great night of music and fun featuring Vinnie Mendango, The Chicklets, Jay Siegel's Tokins, the incredible Bobby Wilson. There will be great food trucks with specialty sandwiches, pizza, funnel cakes, and much more. Courtesy shuttle buses and parking will be available at the Lenox Parking Lot located at 1414 Ratcliffe Street, directly across from Caesar's Restaurant. The courtesy buses will start at 3 and run continuously until 11:00 P.M. Come on down early and enjoy all our tasty food trucks. So grab your lawn chair, join all your friends. Saturday, September 17, starting at 6 o'clock for Oldies on the River in historic Bristol Borough. The concert will be held in the Mill Street Parking Lot along the Delaware River. The rain date is Sunday, September 18, starting at 4. Please help us spread the word, share and like this post. Very good, Craig. Thank you.
Who's the narrator? Who's the narrator? It is.
So that ad is running on Facebook and.
We actually have a little fan ad this year. And not counting the free, we're over, I think I know this morning, close to about 9,000 views. And we did an audience of a 50-mile radius. It's going to be a big deal.
Thank you. Thank you.
So hopefully, people will come down and enjoy, it's a way for, we showcase our town. We added a lot of food vendors this year for food, and I think it's going to be a good night. So hopefully, everybody will come and enjoy it themselves. Any questions on the DOOP for this Saturday? And there are, he did say free shuttle buses that run. Okay, public participation. Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium and state your name.
Congratulations to the new mayor. Nice to meet you. My name's Carla.
How are you?
How are you? I am here on behalf of Betty Rodriguez, one unity that she received was wrong with board. So we went to make it great. This is for Betty Rodriguez to honor her for her dedicated service of 19 years to the council and to the community. So I wanted to give this to her.
Thank you. That's okay. It happens. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We also have one for Rosie Rosetta Turmatt for 30 years of being a president for the Friday Department. And I cannot leave hers.
Sure.
Ready? On three. One, two, three. We'll do one other one. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could give it to Chief Moores, and he'll give it to us after the meeting. Thank you. Okay, anybody else on, are you? Anybody else on this side of the room?
My name's Aaron Antonelli, and thank you for having me. I wanted to start off by, Bob Costas said something about sports. Says the best thing about sports is a sense of community and shared emotion it can create. And that's why I'm here. The rec program is just taking off. We have, I'm going to be conservative, we have roughly 350 to 450 kids constantly moving in town. We don't, no, we don't need that.
Yes, we do.
We need, we need help. And I'm here literally for two reasons tonight. When Pops started this thing, I never wanted to be seen in public, and I still don't want to be. I'm not here for a political gain and/or social standing, awards, or anything. It's, five years ago, my wife and I had a conversation, and I said, I feel like I'm failing my kids. So that's why I'm so vested in this program. With that being said, we have people like Stacy that, you know, we work hand in hand. We work with guys like Brian, we work with guys like Mike Popawski, and I'm here literally just to ask for help from the people watching on TV, from you guys, from all the businesses in town, from the school board, on down. And I got some bullet points that I wanted to touch base on. The biggest thing that I am pursuing as a personal endeavor to the kids is, we need lights. We need lights at the Otter Street Fields, we need lights at the track, we need lights at the courts. I'm not asking for permanent infrastructure because the amount didn't go into, you know, laying the, you know, the four-ott down to the transformers and kicking it out into a lake. It's just been totally too expensive. The fast, the way to fast-track that would be light towers. I presented some numbers for light towers probably six to eight months ago. There were six of them, and this would be a rental synopsis. So that way, the borough wouldn't have to maintain any of this equipment. The rental company that we would rent it from hypothetically would maintain that burden. When we're done with them, whether it's a two-month duration and/or a six-month duration, we send them back, we're done with it. You know, we might have to pay a fuel bill here or there, but I'm sure with all the fuel companies in town, we can get some off-road diesel donated, you know, literally on the cross. I work for a diesel company, so if I have to, I'll pay for it out of my own pocket to get it going, just until we can find somebody. But the emphasis on sports right now, especially primarily soccer, is center point because, as you guys all know, everybody has kids in sports. Soccer can run until mid-November. We lose daylight, we lose daylight fast. We just started a fifth or eighth program. We have 37 kids signed up. We just started Saturday. We rolled out four, five, six, and seven. Last night, we already have like 25 kids signed up in one night. So the plan eventually here is, is to stop losing our kids to other schools. We lose kids to Conde Aligent, we lose kids to Ghost, we lose kids to, to all these private schools, and I, quite frankly, I can't take it anymore. I have way too much pride in this town and the people in this town to lose these kids to, you know, scholastically, to go somewhere else, or they're being bribed. You know, hey, come here and, you know, you don't even have good grades, but we'll give you a full ride because you're good at sports. Like, that's not a great thing. Nick DiStati tonight at the school is doing all these great programs that these kids aren't going to benefit from because we're losing them. And sports is one way to keep them here. Scholastically, you know, the better the kids doing sports, unfortunately, it's just a fact, the more money it brings to town. I'm a capitalist through and through, and I love money, and if that's the route that we have to go to get more money here for the kids, then so be it. But my point is, is that retention, retention is key. If, the more sports, the more programs we have for these kids, the more time we keep them off their iPads, keep them, I don't even know what they do anymore, in all honesty, because my kids, if they're not playing sports with me, they're playing Roblox or, you know, on YouTube, and I, it's just a world I don't get, nor do I want to. But our job as, as just parents and as a public is to keep these kids going. And sports, I can't believe I'm a sports dad because I never thought I would be, but, you know, we're seeing overlap also with the other schools. Pop said tonight that, you know, St. Mark's wants lights on the field, so there would be the benefit of that also. The other thing that's real big to me is support from just the businesses, support from the parents, support from the schools. Stacy and I printed out 1,400 flyers at the beginning of last year. Come to find out, maybe, what, 200 of them got handed out? And, you know, our baseball numbers are, that affects everything. Ask the pipeline for, you know, for the kids, you know, or parents roll out and say, you know, I didn't know that program existed, so I was going to start this with things that we do wrong. And I know that's not the typical way to do it. But people have no qualms coming up to me and telling, telling me what our shortcomings are, and one of them is communication. We can get better at communicating. The other thing that we can do is the overlapping of sports, whether it's field hockey and baseball, or soccer and baseball, or football, or whatever. baseball, or soccer and baseball, or football, or whatever it may be. I'd like to mitigate that because if we're pulling, there's only so many kids in town and if we're pulling kids out of a sport that they love just to keep them busy over here, they could get a scholarship eventually in that sport that they love. So I don't wanna, I don't, that could be detrimental to their, to their potential near future. It's not something that I want. But we, we just, we need support and we need people to come out and volunteer and, you know, there's a handful. There's about ten great people right now that are doing this. And, you know, I'm not really gonna go into names, but they know who they are and we just, we need more of them. And, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I just, I just employ anybody that's watching or, you know, listening to just, you know, take a minute and we just need you to show up, that's it. Ninety percent of this game is just showing up, you know, and, and what comes therefore after, we can show you, we can guide you. If we don't know, I watch YouTube videos before I go to sports. I don't know anything about soccer, I just kind of fake it till you make it. You know, the kids like it, they, you go to school and they go, hey, coach, hey, coach, and it's still odd, but, you know, Brian, you know it's a good feeling, Stacy, you know it's a good feeling. And if you can take one kid, one kid's life, just one kid, and just give them something to do. And some of these kids have nothing at home. Their parents are broken. You know, they are broken. Corona has broken these kids socially. And, you know, the more that we can get them out, I just think the beneficial, the more beneficial it'll be for us and the community as a whole. That's it.
Just let me give you where council is on a lot of this stuff. First of all, we're, we are, I'm gonna form committee starting this evening to start looking at the entire borough and how we're gonna help different organizations, how we're gonna move forward with different things from sports to whatever, because there's a lot of kids that don't play sports. So we need to be well-rounded for everybody. As far as lights on fields, we know that's something that we're also looking into. We're gonna invest so much money out of this sewer fund into different, and one major thing is recreation. So that's gonna happen. I talked to Stacy about sprucing up Little Lake Fields. It's the first thing you see when you come into town. Dugouts need to be redone, fencing needs to be fixed. There's a lot of things that have to get done. So we know what has to get done, we're working towards that, forming groups. We also talked about appointing you to our recreation board, but we didn't even get to appointments yet. It's been a long summer, we had so much going on. Who's sick with COVID, so, but that's not an excuse, we need to move forward.
And I'm not here to complain, I don't want that.
We know, we know that there's lighting that has to get done. Where it's being done, if it's gonna be done on two facilities, Otter Street and the big hardball field, maybe something to school. I already talked to Mr. Chicoletti. He said the school board is in favor of doing something in conjunction with the borough on splitting some costs. So we are working, we have a committee, the council and school board members that are going, we haven't met. It's just been, like I said...
Is there, is there anything that I can do in the interim temporarily just to, and I'm only asking because these programs are actively going on to get maybe a few light towers. We're talking six hundred bucks a month, you know, for the next four months, just to...
Does that light tower give us the proper lighting where nobody's gonna get hurt?
Absolutely.
But who's, who's making that determination?
I've been working around light towers as a few...
I know. We all do. Construction-wise.
Absolutely. Yes.
But I don't know if, I mean, Kurt, that's something, maybe we need to sit down with him and discuss? And we could do, we could fast-track that in the next couple of days?
That's kind of what I was looking for and, and, and my, my selling tactic was gonna be, we can use them in town on, you know, for the, for, you know, construction jobs, like what was going on, you know, construction, we could have brought out the light towers that night. You know, so there, there will be some overlap there also. It, it'll be reciprocal for...
Well, let's, you're around during the day.
I would do it, well, you can run it monthly, you can run it...
No. Are you around during the day?
Are you?
Oh, yeah, I work from home now. I don't work, I don't go to New York.
So let's see, we can meet over the next couple of days. I'll talk to our engineers. Bring some kind of...
I have a proposal and everything ready to go.
I ain't worried about the cost, I'm worried about the lights. We wanna make sure that if kids are on the soccer field playing, that we don't want them to get hurt and they say, we're responsible because we didn't provide the proper lights.
Solar, solar has also taken a mine unto its own and the power of the battery can harness a lot of lumens. So that's another avenue we can pursue. I did wanna say thank you for allowing us to do this, you know, without, you know, Ryan and Greg, Brian, Maria, Lou, Mike, I don't know you, you're a good-looking guy though. Welcome to the appointment.
Thank you.
I wish I had your hair. And you guys, like, it's been real and it's been fun and we do it for the kids.
Aaron.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you also, you need volunteers, correct?
We, we need, that is first and foremost, be tuned for this thing to grow.
Volunteers with clearances.
So, so we run clearances through, through Little League, so before anybody...
You don't. She's saying no.
Here's what I wanna, here's what I wanna say.
Pops is running a...
Oh, okay. Well, I, so any, any, anybody that has come onto the Be of Bless Far, I have vetted them through state and local fingerprints. I get them and then I send them over to the box.
I went online today and I did a couple for myself.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you're a volunteer, they're free. That's what I wanted to say.
And, and they're both free, actually.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. That's what I wanted to say. That's all.
But the, the focal point of these sports programs, unfortunately, kids that are my kids' age, like thirteen, by the time they get into baseball and football, it's kind of too late. So if we could get them at four, five and six, I mean, they, they would just, we have them. We don't just have them, we have the family. And once the family's vested, the kids are vested. Once the kids are vested, the parents are vested. And then you got them all, you know, and that's how you build a, that's how you change a, everybody always talks about this, this, oh, we need to change the culture, change the culture. Change the culture by getting everybody involved. That's simple. It's the only thing that we need to do, and if we can get them at the right age, you know, like we did basketball, I mean, you were there, you saw, you saw how diverse those kids were. You saw the third and fourth grade kids play flight football, they didn't wanna leave.
They played at thirteen neither, because they, they were out there learning.
But if we could encapsulate it and get them younger, it would be even better. That's all I'm saying. You know, I, I coached the kids at a roller coaster, but I would like to see more emphasis and the volunteers come out, all those younger age groups. And people assume because they're four, five and six, that they're not capable of doing it. And they're severely underestimated what any kid can do.
Well, we know this, I mean, we've all been a part of sports for years and...
You guys wanna leave?
They take their posters.
Sitting here.
Yeah, you'll be, you'll be good.
That's, that's the key. Like, we know that.
Now, we still gotta go through council. We got at least an hour before we even vote.
Okay.
But everything should be fine. Unless you want to.
Sure, that's fine.
You're more than welcome.
And Aaron mentioned about getting this out to the masses.
Wanna go to the podium, Stacy?
Yeah, girl, you know better than that.
No, I didn't want to do this tonight. Aaron mentioned about getting this out to everybody and we all utilize Facebook. So if it isn't all possible that we could get access to a small space on the borough page, so we just have that presence, you know, Pops can control it and just put whatever programs are going on, the Google Docs, all in one link on the Bristol Borough page, if that would be possible, it would just be another presence for us. Because right now we have the Bristol Sports page that I try and put everything to on Facebook and then we have BristolSports.org is the website, but I don't always get everything.
I think the lack of communication is coming down to, Mike needs to come here because council is sponsoring all these in conjunction with the school board. And we don't even know what's being, sometimes we don't even know what's going on.
And there needs to be a...
So there's a lack of communication on the other side too. And I talked to Mike about this a few times. But I think we're, we're kicking this can down the road too long. We know we need to meet, let's get a meeting scheduled and, and move on.
It's not just with rec, also it's other, the other five hundred one threesies in town, whether it's Boy Scouts, whether it's the Teen Foundation, whether it's CYLA, if we could all sit down, I said this earlier, there is not too much community in this, like there, the more we get involved with, and I don't care if it's from the Jehovah's Witnesses to the Catholics, I mean, unilaterally, the more we get involved, the more they get involved, the more people get involved.
Getting out to all the kids by going to the schools and having every, every student take a form home.
We've done daycares, we've done high school, we've done the grade school, we've done the Catholic schools. But we need the teachers and the administration to reciprocate. And they need to go into each teacher's individual mailbox, from there the teacher takes the pamphlet, puts it in his kid's set folder and it gets home. That would be the fastest way, believe it or not, snail mail is still the best way. Some parents are fifty, sixty, seventy years old, not saying anything, guys, if you're in that age group, but they're technologically impaired and they don't have Facebook and or Instagram.
No, you're right.
So snail mail is, is the best way to do it, no excuses.
But we did print eighteen hundred flyers when we were doing registration and we do it every year. We hit all the local daycares, we hit the schools. I'd say seventy percent of the parents who came in to register in person had not gotten that flyer, home and their child's back. So that's an expense we're putting out to get it out there to them and it wasn't being utilized. So once everything gets settled, if that, you know, on the borough site isn't like a centralized site, should happen, it would be a big help because people type in Bristol Borough or sports or whatever.
Discuss.
Yeah.
And just to be, be the voice a little bit more, if we all did sit down and talk, not just a few of us, but the collective, I think we could put basically a yearly schedule out for the whole year and say, this is what Bristol Borough has to have, is what Mike's what...
We should be working towards it.
And to his defense, he is so busy out at that school right now. I literally just got...
He needs a let us know so we could...
Absolutely. And that's kind of, honestly, that's kind of why I'm here, because he is so involved with his kids and the program itself. Then we need to...
Get somebody either to replace him or to work with him.
Work with him, I would say. He needs, he needs another one, you know, that's all.
Real quick, before you leave.
Absolutely.
Stacy, this is basically for you.
Trying to duck away.
I got a phone call last night from someone, I don't know if you know Art Memmie, Arthur Memmie, they live on Grant Avenue?
I know the name, yes.
Okay. Well, he was involved with the Fifth Ward Club for years. His family and, you know, it's been sold and there's something going on there and they wanna leave some kind of, they have some money left over. And he wants to, at some point, I know, speaking with him last night, they wanna donate ten thousand dollars to Little League.
There you go.
Getting, he wants to, that that would be, that would be great. They wanna buy uniforms or they wanna help in some way and there might be some other things that they wanna do, but we talked about, and I guess, still didn't even go through with the manager, I didn't know you were gonna be here tonight.
I didn't know it was gonna be here.
But they're thinking about if we could run the finances through the borough and then as you apply for this money, whether it's for helmets or equipment or whatever, and you, we'll sit down, I mean, I will sit down with you, I mean, he lives right around a corner from you.
That's awesome.
And you guys can meet, but I think it was very generous of them to wanna make a ten thousand dollar donation to, to Little League. So it shows you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you.
All right?
Appreciate it.
Now you took enough of our time. Aaron, don't come, Aaron, don't come back too much. It's eight o'clock.
Thanks, Stacy.
Anybody else for public participation? Okay. That ends public participation. Okay. Joseph, what do we have, chief?
I'll make it quick.
All right.
So in, in August, we continued our community policing initiative. This is just some of the things that the officers attended was National Night Out, Sunday Stroll, meet and greet with the residents of Seabird Drive. The officers attended Unity Day. We had the night at the St. Anne's Carnival with the cops for all the, the kids in town with the sponsor of Bristol Environmental. We had ice cream with the cops at Our Children at God on Mill Street. We had officers attend the football game home opener and we had officers attend the Snyder Girardi and the high school forums this past week. Continuing on, last week was the opening of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which was a success and with the partnership between the school board and the council, the mayor, myself, the school board secured a grant. So just so everybody knows, we have officers assigned to the schools in town now during the day, interacting in a positive way with the kids. I think it's a great program. It's gonna be successful, no doubt. And last but not least is we are continuing to address the quality of life issues here in town. The stop signs, especially with the kids being back in school, the speeding in the areas, we gotta remember and be mindful that the crossing guards are out there now in the morning and in the afternoon. Please just slow down if you're watching and make sure you stop. And the other quality of life issues with the cars and noise. And last but not least, the bike patrols have been out in the evening and in the overnight hours trying to address the thefts that are going on in town.
Yeah. I also wanna say that on Unity Day, I wasn't the only one to receive an award. Joe, the chief and his staff, the police, all got an award that day too for their service to the town, so...
And I, I'd like to say that we, we've always asked for a proactive police force. We've been saying how long? A proactive, you know, we, we need this town to be proactive in the things that we need. I have to say, I know we're friends, everybody knows it, but you are doing the best job I've seen in years.
Well, I think, I think we're all doing it together. That's the only way it's gonna work, is we do it together.
I'm proud to have whoever...
I'm proud to be here. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
There? I'm on the air.
First and foremost, I wanna say thank you to everybody who reached out to me over the last month after being sworn in. I was humbled by the hundreds in like texts and phone calls, emails, you know, former mayors like Tosti and Sabatini and other elected officials throughout the county reached out to me, wishing me well and congratulating me and it really just, it humbles you when you step up and take a position and see how many people are actually behind you and support you in, in this endeavor. Going forward, I had a chance to sit down with our chief because one of my biggest things is I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. And when I say be on the same page, I mean, just like Joe said, we are gonna get a handle on the quality of life issues in this borough. This borough will not become a Philadelphia. This borough will not be the dumping ground for other people's problems throughout the rest of the county. We are gonna take people that are troublemakers and trespassers and people that are creating issues for the residents of this town and we're gonna deal with it and we're gonna get rid of them. Even if we have to bring them back to where they came from, they're gonna go. Because we are not going to accept lawlessness and P, and our residents having to deal with this day in and day out. They're doing a phenomenal job, they have stepped up. I think it's apparent how the presence is throughout this town and I think we should all be happy with what's going on. But I just wanted to make a statement that, you know, my job as the mayor is to work with the police chief, not tell him what to do. And I can guarantee you that we're on the same page when it comes to getting a handle on these quality of life issues in this borough.
That's all I got.
You got? Maureen?
Jim, I wanna talk to you about No Run Again. I'd like to have them come in next month and talk to us because I've seen a lot of work being done there. And I wanna get a timeline because there's a lot of people that have been asking me about jobs in the borough and I wanna, you know, let them know that when it is gonna come, when it's gonna start, when they're gonna be. And that's it. That's all I have.
A simple one, Mr. Dylan, this may have been remedied already, but dog bags on the path, they were empty this week, if you could just refill them.
Keep pulling them out.
I know. I know.
I mean, in front of my house, they pull the trail all the way down.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, then if, I mean, if we're gonna remove them altogether, then maybe we should do that, because I think some dog walkers go out, they don't bring it back because they think they're gonna be there, their dog walker.
I'd like to know if we could put a solar camera over it.
Or, I mean, we take them away, and we tell people to bring their own bags, if it's not serving the purpose, but one or the other, I think is something we should figure out. Mr. Dillon, I know I've been harping on Simon and Schuster, and, you know, I don't want to sound like it's not as good to be, it was a vacant building for as long as it was, and now it's not, so that's not a bad thing. I just do have like concerns of just little things that keep popping up there that just don't seem to be in line with what's going on. First of all, they still have that fence that's just destroyed. You know, I don't know if that's even within our jurisdiction to tell them they have to fix the fence. I don't know, just looks terrible. But now there's like twenty cars parked in the, behind it, and one of them is upside down, literally wheels up, and I don't think it's employee parking. So, I don't know what it is, but I have some concerns about whatever may be developing there. I know we've had some other instances where big buildings in the back become dumping grounds. I would not want that to occur there at Simon and Schuster. We know there are many traffic issues that have developed that were there before and gone when Simon and Schuster was vacant and are back, and that's not necessarily their fault. I mean, you know, trucks have to get in and out of there, it's a complicated situation. But at the same time, the quality of that property, I think we need to stay on top of it, which I also know, you know, we're working on hiring some more code enforcement, but I would like us to stay on top of that property, because I have concerns about it. Last thing I want to say is, as we move into the fall, you know, at certain points in time, Councilman De Giuseppe takes a lot on his plate. Sometimes those of us that are friends of his think too much on his own plate. So I've been harping on the idea that I would really like to be intimately involved in the tree lighting that is coming up in December. You know, it's a council event, we get a lot of volunteers, like Mr. Whitaker, obviously, and the volunteers take it and run with it, which I am very, very appreciative of. But I do think council events should have a council presence, and I would like to be a presence on that tree.
No problem.
Okay, that's all I have.
Lead the way with that one.
Okay, thank you.
And this, I just talked to Matt before the meeting, that I said we definitely need to straighten out the PA system.
Well, yes, I agree.
And he's talking about meeting this week, I think Wednesday at ten AM, so clear, go here first.
Yep, in my previous life, I was a DJ, believe it or not, so I had some knowledge of that stuff, so.
Thank, no.
Actually, I have good news. Amtrak has been working along the tracks on the Garden Street, behind Race Street, all along the track. They've been working and cleaning up outside the fence. They did give me a date, hoping that they can complete some of the jobs, which would be at the end of this month. Race Street, that area there is a lot more, so that they're going to be taking a little bit more time, well, they'll need more time to clean that up. And also, they'll start working on inside the fence. But for right now, starting, they're just getting all the overgrowth that's going over the fence. So with that being said, the North Ward cleanup is going, I'm looking at scheduling it for the spring, like in April, sometime in April, so once I get a definite date, I will let everybody know. So, but if anyone is interested in helping with the North Ward cleanup, to please send me your name and phone number through email, the council email, and so we can get this started. That's pretty much it.
I just want to say one thing, including myself, was unable to get anything done on them street, so I give you a lot of credit for doing what you did and went and knocked on somebody's door personally and said, you got to help me clean this up, so I got, you did a good job.
I made that my priority, so.
Thank you, thank you. Louis?
Yes, I wanted to let people be aware that the Grundy Foundation has completed the restoration of the museum and they built that coach house there, but if you get a chance to walk by and just see the gardens are now complete, and it's breathtaking, it's beautiful. They really did a great job. My issue right now with the trash in town, we've got people that put mattresses out. Now, Mascara puts out a brochure, and it's on our website, mattresses have to be wrapped in plastic or they don't get picked up. And this is not just Mascara, this is all the trash people do it. So if you're putting it out, it doesn't get picked up. Now it's sitting outside for, seems like forever. And same thing with TVs. We have, you know, the borough has facilities at the Public Works Building to take these TVs. Borough is paying to get rid of it. You don't need to leave it outside for the trash man, because he's not going to take it. So I just want to make everybody aware that you have to, you know, you have to be a little cognizant of what the rules are in handling this trash. And it's not just that you can come to a councilman and say, you know, my alley's dirty, or my sidewalk's dirty, there's broken glass. Sometimes you just got to get up and clean it up yourself.
Yep.
Or if you see your kids throw the papers out, tell them, or their kids' friends throw them, tell them, and before you know it, things, you know, things may turn around. And even our tenant, landlords, have to be aware that just because your tenant moves out in the first of the month, and he leaves his trash out, and it's three days before the trash picks up, I think these people should be held responsible for that. The landlords or homeowners that do this, you know, you know when today the trash goes out? Don't put it out three days ahead of time, because, you know, that's convenient for you. Think about everybody else in town. You know, it's so nice when people drive through town and say how nice it looks, but then sometime when you take a look, and it's homeowners and residents doing it. Even with, somebody mentioned the doggy bags, well, I'm getting tired of walking in town, finding somebody picks up their dog dirt, ties it up, and then throws it out of sight. You have a dog, take your dog, your bag home with you, and put it in your trash can. Don't throw it in somebody else's trash can, or don't throw it on somebody else's lawn. You know, we really have to start, it's easy to say, you know, the borough should be doing this or that, but to tell you the truth, we can't afford to be, you know, out there looking for everything. This is the kind of way you can make a county look good, and it won't cost anybody a dime, just a little bit of your own energy. So that's my, that's my spiel for tonight.
It's true.
You're right, Louis.
It's true.
Michael?
Just to add to what Councilman Koutoche said, the other thing is that it is being enforced. So we're getting the people behind, you know, filling positions, and it's going to be enforced, everything from the parking to the trash, to the loitering, and it will be enforced. And there's a plan in place, and just be aware that it will be enforced, and it may lead to some citations or filings, but we want to get that back.
Eddie?
And Mr. De, do we have any restrictions on disposing of paint cans?
Yes.
What is it?
Well, it depends on the type of paint. You know, certain paint can go out to the trash, but it's a certain type of latex, it's got to go to latex you can put out.
Right.
Little base you can.
Little base you can, okay.
Eddie, it might be in that.
I looked, I have it right here, it's small. And then, trees. People are pulling out their trees, and then they want to put these ugly things in that area, replace the tree. Don't get mad at us, because you take the tree out, or the tree's dead, and somebody removes it, you have to replace the tree. That's the ordinance, period. And that's it. Oh, no, 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 the mobile gas station is getting crazy again. I don't know why, it's not your fault, Mr. Dillon, or anybody here, but it gets out of control, the weeds come out of the sidewalk, it's really a mess, and then we complain, and then we get them to clean it up, and then three, you know, a month and a half later, it's, again, I don't know why, it has to be constant, why whoever owns it can't keep it up. So I have an issue with that. And that's it, and thank you. And welcome aboard, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I agree with Louis said, and Michael, like he said, there are changes that are going to be, that are made. What's so frustrating is, I came down Pond Street the other day, and I seen this little old lady outside picking weeds out of the brick and sweeping her sidewalk, and then you go down five houses, and there's trash everywhere. So I think council, being so tied up with different things, that we lost track of what's really important, and the most important thing is to make this town look as best as we can. And we always put a lot on the renter that owns property. Well, yes, but we also need to start looking at people that own homes. Now, maybe we need to talk to our solicitor, he's not here tonight, but maybe we need to figure a way we have to change our ordinance, but we have now, I'm not saying lost things, but things got out of control. So we're going to, I'm going to form some committees. One committee is to hire and look at new inspectors for the borough. So we have about forty applications right now. If anybody else wants to put an application in over the next several weeks, we're hoping by October, meeting, we're hoping, it may not happen, but by October's meeting, we hire a full-time inspector, and we're also looking for a part-time inspector. There's going to be a major crackdown in town for things that are just neglected, that people can go out and clean up their sidewalk and pull weeds and do the little things that just makes this town look good. So that's one issue. The other issue is, I talked to the manager about our roads are starting to look like they need to be redone, especially Pond, from Mill Street all the way down to Wawa, the end of Farragut Avenue. The last time I think we did that road was about fifteen years ago or more, and the problem with that road is it's a concrete road, so it's not going to hold up like our other ones. But we're going to, the council hasn't had a problem, authorize the manager to work with Gilmore to start assessing every street in town again. And hopefully by spring, we have a game plan in place that we could start repaving roads. Now, we know there's a section of Pond Street from Jefferson to Grant Avenue or to Lincoln that's really bad, and there's another section of Pond up the other end. We may be able to get some of that done before the winter, if not fixed to a point where cars are going to have to deal with these potholes and things like that. So we know the roads need to be addressed right now. It's not a lot of them, but, you know, we haven't worked on a road program in a while. And not only the roads, we need to work on the path that goes through town. We fixed certain sections, but we're going to go through that again, maybe that, we're going to redo the path. So that's something that, when we set these finance councils up, that we're going to come back and make recommendations to how we're going to move forward with different things. The other thing is, we're having a hard time getting crossing guards. We have one application that came in today from somebody in Bristol Township, and that's fine, but we try to give these jobs to borough people first. If you're interested in a crossing guard job, please notify the borough. It's run through the police department, but we talked this evening, and we're probably going to raise the rate of crossing guards, even for the people that we have. We feel that if we increased our salary, we're going to maybe get some more people. I don't know what the solution is, but, you know, everybody's looking for help. But we definitely are in dire need of crossing guards, especially substitute crossing guards. So if you're interested, please contact the borough and give Jim your information or come in and file an application. So I want to form an investment committee, and I'm going to get two members of the Sewer Authority, I'm going to appoint.
To the committee.
And I'm also going to appoint Mr. Pezza, Mr. Koutoche, and Mrs. Cullen to that committee. And the reason, a lot of these meetings are going to be held during the day, and Mr. Pezza, Ms. Cullen, and Mr. Koutoche are available during the day. I'm also going to appoint a hiring committee to start looking at all these applications for inspectors, secretary, whatever we need, where I start filling positions. And that committee, I'm going to put Mr. Gorman on, Mrs. Rodriguez, and Mrs. Cullen. And then I need to form a union grievance committee, because there may be some issues with unions since we sold the sewer plant, and Mrs. Rodriguez, Mrs. Cullen, and Mr. Koutoche would like to serve on them committees. So them three committees are, we're getting started right now. And the next few, we're going to start meeting weekly, I think come October, we're going to start meeting every Monday, we're going to schedule a meeting every Monday in October and November, to try to get things moving, because come April of next year, March or April, we want to be in a position to implement a lot of things that we plan on doing, with recreation, with lighting for the fields, whatever it may be. We're going to bring, once we get these committees formed, then we're going to bring some people outside that sit on some of these committees, too, some borough residents that want to get involved in this. And that's about all I have. I don't know if anybody has anything else, Mr. Dillon? Okay, with that, we'll go into our regular agenda. So any public participation on the regular agenda? Public participation is closed. Wait one minute. Joe, you have anything for, before we?
Just since we were talking about the hiring, if you could just announce that if anybody in town is Act 120, we're looking for part-time police officers, too. That would be great.
So if you're Act 120 certified, or you know anybody, the borough's also looking for part-time police officers.
Thank you, Ralph.
Mayor's communication, anything? Good? Okay. Number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the council meeting minutes of August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, to accept the treasurer's report for July two thousand and twenty-two, to accept the inspection report for August two thousand and twenty-two, to accept the public works report for August two thousand and twenty-two, to accept the police report for August two thousand and twenty-two, to accept the fire two's report for July and August of two thousand and twenty-two, and to accept the harbor report for August two thousand and twenty-two.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry.
I have to abstain from the harbor report.
Okay.
Because I'm an applicant there.
Okay. Extension.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver of land development for Lumbermans Associates, Inc., plan stated January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, expiration date November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving validation notice fees to be added as a collection fee to be now collected as part of the unpaid municipal claims for delinquent trash accounts.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Act one-six-seven Stormwater Management Ordinance per the PA Department Environmental Protection.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution for the two thousand and twenty-three minimum municipal obligation, the non-uniformed defined contribution pension plan of twelve thousand and two dollars and nine cents.
Second by Mr. Koutoche, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution for the two thousand and twenty-three minimum municipal obligation for the uniformed pension plan of five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, one hundred and thirteen and ninety cents.
Municipal Obligation for the Uniformed Pension Plan of $549,113.90.
Second by Mrs. Cullen. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution? I'm sorry, number 10, right?
10.
Nine.
Nine, okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a, a motion to adopt a resolution for the 2023 Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Non-Uniform Pension Plan in the amount of $571,099.84.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Just so you know, this is the, an actuary figures out the money that the borough has to come up with, and the state kicks in so much money. But if you look at these obligations, every year it just keeps getting higher and higher and higher. It's almost a million one right now. I asked Jim to give us our contribution. So, for '23, the borough obligation is $441,000, and the state is putting in $108,000. And for, that was the police, and for the non-uniform, it's $512,000 is the borough obligation, and the state is contributing $58,000. So, we have a million dollars we need to come up with just to try to meet our pension obligations. It's literally almost impossible to meet these obligations, and that's why I said a year ago that, you know, we've been keeping current for the last year and a half, we just can't generate that kind of income just to meet them obligations. So, Mr. Dillon is asking us to appoint a special finance advisor, which we're going to add to the agenda, so he could sit down and discuss this with, with them to see what our options are. But this is a problem that's throughout the entire state of Pennsylvania. The pension funds are underfunded by billions, not millions, billions of dollars. So, this isn't just a Bristol Borough problem, this is a problem throughout the entire state of Pennsylvania, with school teachers, with borough employees, with everybody. So, for a little town like us to come up with a million dollars just to meet pension obligations, we can't do it. We don't, our, our budget is only, what, $7,000?
Yeah, well, about $5 million in general fund.
The general fund.
General fund.
So, $5 million, you're talking a million dollars just to come up with. That's 20 percent. We can't do it. So, I don't know where this is going to end or how it's going to end, but I know we can't afford it, and we just can't keep putting this money in. So, as long as everybody understands that on council and everybody at home understands it, there's no way that we can meet these obligations. Even with the sewer fund, even with the money from the water sale, we don't generate enough interest to make this payment every year. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of exec, execution of grant agreement with Bucks County for community development block grant in the amount of $150,400 to assist with ADA curb ramp improvements.
Second by Mr. Koutoche. Questions or comments? So, every year we apply for money through the county, community development money, and we, this year we got $150,000.
I assume we got $300,000.
Last year we got $300,000. So, that went down dramat, in half. We try to get that money to do handicap ramps. So, it's a shame we, you know, we were cut $150,000 this year. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number 11.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reject the bids for Pond Street paving from Jefferson Avenue to Lincoln Avenue per recommendations of Gilmore Associates. All three of these bids exceeded the state limit, so we're asking to reject it.
Second by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments? So, as Mr. Koutoche said, we got three quotes for this job, and the job, it exceeded the state minimum, so we have to go out the public bid or we got to reduce the scope of the work that we wanted to get done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number 12.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the manager to hire a special counsel with referral to Mill Street's parking lot for litigation.
Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number 13.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize appointing investment committee to recommend invested proceeds from the sale of the sewer system.
Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number 14.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize appointing a grievance committee for the union grievances.
Second by Mr. Koutoche. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number 15.
Mr. President, I'd like to table the appointment of an alternate member to the zoning hearing board.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules to have the manager authorize hiring. What is it?
Make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should suspend the rule.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Mrs. Cullen?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the manager to authorize hiring of a financial advisor for our pension obligation.
Second by Mr. Koutoche. Questions or comments? You want to mention it, defer, are you okay?
I think we should mention Calhoun Baker.
Calhoun Baker, who is?
They represent the Delaware Valley Financial Financing Authority, very well respected, very competent. They've helped them for about 15 years. The district has used them in every financing.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez.